Chris has got to hit the button.
He's got to hit the button.
It started.
Okay, so thank you for joining us tonight. This is the December 12th.
Recording in progress.
This is December 12th meeting of the Westford Select Board, and as you just heard, this is a recorded meeting. So we will start tonight with a pledge of allegiance led by Andrea.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the republic which stands one nation under God. Liberty and justice for all.
So tonight we have Tom is remote in, I believe, China tonight, so we will be taking all of our votes by roll call. And Kristen is also remote tonight, so she didn't want to give us all the budget news and, you know, too close to comfort. So the first thing I wanted to do tonight, under open forum, was to congratulate Patty Doobie on retirement from town clerk after 25 years of service in the town of Westford. And I've partied her for that entire time, getting sworn at every couple of years for every new committee, but, you know, great face of the town. When we've had, you know, residents with questions, Patty knows the answer. So we're going to really, really, really miss you, and we hope you, you know, stick around Town Hall and say hi to her so often.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. I mean, going back about 18 years ago, when I was starting committees, you were the go-to person for solving all my problems. But, you know, with all the minutes that we had to take.
Now who are you going to go to?
I don't know. And then, of course, when we were doing the elections, you were always around. I mean, you held this place together, and you stepped right up when the previous town clerk left to fill her position better. And I think you've done a superb job over those years. And it's always a pleasure to go into town clerk and say hello, so you're going to be missed.
I can say it's been my honor and privilege to serve as your town clerk, and I really appreciate that I was able to do that. And I will cry.
Next time, if the clickers don't work, we're going to call you up.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot the clickers.
Second, on the open forum is to recognize Ellen Apicio on her retirement from the J.B. Fletcher Library after 26 years for the town of Westford. Since 1997, Ellen has brought us generation or brought two generations of Westford youngsters enjoying books, song, music, language, and reading. A favorite of young readers and their parents alike, she's brought charm, research, and transformation to youth services for over a quarter of a century. We wish her a joyous adventure to Ellen and to her husband Bernie as they journey into retirement. So, you know, looking back at all of her accomplishments, we've got Mother Goose Times, Wiggy Words, Book Bunch, ABC and Me, Baby Lap Time, Story Walks, Can't Read a Lot, and then during COVID, Storytime Outdoors with Bernie. So, you know, a long list of accomplishments that all of our children remember probably more than we do. So congratulations to Ellen. And finally, we want to announce that the Communication Advisory Committee is holding a public hearing on December 13th, that's tomorrow night, at 7:00 PM to discuss cable TV. I believe it's actually also going to be here. So if you want to come by again, feel free to give us your opinion. If not, I think it is going to be remote, so you can also join, I believe, that way. Are there any other items open forum?
I just wanted to mention the MBTA Committee is going to be meeting Thursday night in Town Hall, and we're going to be going over the draft of the bylaw that we're going to be proposing for annual town meeting. And what we'll be doing is submitting that to the state for an initial look, so we make sure that we don't have to do it again. And so I think it'd be a good one to attend, learn a little bit more about what we're doing.
Thanks. Any belts? Okay, so next item of business is just to show that we can't let our employees retire gracefully. It's a joint meeting with the Select Board, the Housing Authority, to appoint Patty Doobie as to a vacant seat on the authority until the election of May 7th, 2024. So I'm not sure who's the chair. Is it Nancy? So if you want to call your computer order if you've got a quorum.
Call our meeting to on.
Is there anyone online from the Housing Authority that needs to be promoted, or is everyone in the room?
No, we're all in the room.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara's absent, but three is quorum. Thank you.
So I presume that you've taken a vote to recommend Patty.
We voted unanimously to ask you in this joint meeting to appoint Patty to our open seat in the Housing Authority and hope that she'll love it enough to run in May.
I will move to appoint Patty to the Housing Authority.
Is there a second?
For a term until May of 2024.
Okay. John seconds that, so roll call, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And everyone ayes. Congratulations, you're now our fifth member. Unfortunately, our, okay, so it's like seven, 10, we can do that. So seven, 10, we want to have a request.
Do they need to close their meeting?
Oh, sorry. Do you want to close the meeting?
They voted already. Did quietly.
Perfect. The seventh item is to consider changing the transportation services to be a fee-based system by the Council on Aging. So we all have our information in the packets. I'm not sure if there's any comment for the Council on Aging.
We did discuss it at our meeting.
Actually, if you could, you can come to the microphone, tell us where you are.
I'm sorry.
And Jennifer is joining remotely as well.
Nancy Cook, Chair of Council on Aging. Jennifer, did you want to talk about this?
Sure. Good evening, Select Board members. Kristen, the reason that we are asking or proposing to move to a fee-based system is because we just need to have an expectation of a sustainable funding source for the continued growth that we anticipate with our transportation service. And moving from a donation-based system to a fee-based system would allow us to have consistency in payment. And I know one of the things that was a concern to the COA Board was that we would not preclude anyone in a financial hardship situation from having to make a decision to pay less on the utility bill or not be able to participate in a class or a program because of moving to a fee-based system. And we anticipate that we can cover that hardship situation with the use of our EOEA formula grant funding. We did get an increase in the allotment per senior. We also, I know Nancy's there, and I know there's also some potential of obtaining community resources to help sponsor a senior in a hardship situation. We currently have this type structure with our programs and classes and meals, so this wouldn't be anything new. It would also kind of equal or level out the, I don't know how you would say it, but we do have individuals that are in a better position to pay for our transportation service but don't. And then we have people that live on a very fixed income that wouldn't miss paying a donation because they understand the value of the service. So, you know, we really feel like it would be beneficial to, you know, treat everyone fairly, and if we do have individuals that have a hardship situation, they would work with our social services staff just like they, people would currently do, again, like with our programs, meals, and other class opportunities that the Cameron offers that people can't afford. We also would, you know, I would like to do a campaign to the community to allow them to, if they have an interest in supporting a senior in a hardship situation, you know, we would like to provide that opportunity. I know Nancy's there tonight, and, you know, she has shared that Westfords members would be willing to help support this hardship subsidy when needed. So, again, this would just be able to provide a more sustainable financial backing for our transportation program because currently we've been using funding for the last two or three years from our budget, from our 53E. And we've also decreased our, kind of our transportation line item, which was kind of our support cushion. And this, you know, just going, continuing with a donation-based system, just, again, you know, just isn't going to provide the support that we need, especially with a growing older adult population. So we are requesting the Select Board to consider allowing us to move to a fee-based system effective in fiscal year 2025.
I guess this, one question, I'll open up to the rest of the Select Board, but the Council on Aging has discussed this, and I guess took a vote, correct? Which was?
Yes.
That's correct. We did, after a lot of discussion, there's a lot of concern about putting people in the position of having to ask for help to ride the bus for doctor's appointments. We did vote to support it. Jennifer has listed all the ways that she thinks she can cover their cost. Again, we were concerned about putting people in the position of having to ask for help for something else, to go to the Alson to get help for the bus. But she thinks that we can cover it, that they'll apply the same way they apply for other free things that we provide at the senior center. But there's concerns about how to, how to not make them feel any worse than they already do. Can we cover it with Westford members' funds or town function? Probably yes. That wasn't, that wasn't our big concern. Our big concern was the embarrassment.
Well, I guess some other question then is, do we have any seniors from town come to that meeting to voice their, I've heard nothing from seniors. Is this news to them? Have they had a chance to opine, or is this the first they hear of it tonight?
This will be the first they hear of it. It is going to go in the newsletter that it's being considered for the 25 budget season next year, but they've not been talked about ahead of time.
So.
We, can I, I have a, can I interject there?
Yes, please.
We did do a, we did do a townwide survey, and we did get responses from that survey. So seniors have had the opportunity to give their input, and we did not have any strong, we did not have, we did not, we didn't have really any concerns with moving to a fee-based system. And we have, we have spoken to our riders, and they are aware that, you know, we are looking at moving to a fee-based system. So this would not be new news.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it'll be new news that it has happened, that we have gone to fee-bays, yes.
So Andrea?
So I guess my question is, what are the fees going to be and how are they going to be charged? You know, is it by where you're going, by distance, or, and who's going to set the fees? Because none of that was in our packets.
Jennifer, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'll be glad to answer that question. Actually, we're going to keep the same amounts that we asked. We do have a.
Time out, so.
Time out? For those of us who don't know what those amounts are, Jennifer, could you please tell us?
I'm sorry?
There are many of us sitting here who don't know what those recommended amounts are, so could you tell us?
Yeah, yes. So basically, for a ride from their home to a destination in Westford, that the donation currently is $3, and we would continue to have the fee be $3. If you are going to a contiguous town such as Chelmsford, Acton, Groton, Littleton, or Carlisle, the current donation base, the current donation request is $6. The fee would be, would remain $6. And if you're going to an outlying community such as Concord and Lowell, that would be $8, which is currently the donation amount and would currently be the fee-based amount that we would ask for the outlying town. So there wouldn't be any increases in fiscal year 25 because we realize that there will be an adjustment for people moving, you know, to a fee-based versus a donation-based system. And the way that we would collect those funds would be no different than the way that we're doing it now. When riders get on the van, they just give their donation amount, or in this situation it'd be their fee-based amount, to the driver, and then they turn it in at the end of the day. And we do have some individuals that request that they be billed, which we currently do for the, for some of those that would rather not have to carry cash. So there really wouldn't be any change right in fiscal year 25 with the amount that they would be paying, and we would be using the same system of payment.
Actually, we talked about using a punch card so there wouldn't be an embarrassment for somebody that didn't have the money to pay for that trip versus the people that did that, so.
Yeah, Sue, Nancy, I appreciate you bringing that up. We do currently use a punch card in the senior center for, that anybody can purchase, and we give them a discount. Everybody gets the discount, the $5 discount when they use the punch card. So you, one, you get the discount, and second, as Nancy was alluding to, you know, no one knows who has a free, what we call a Cameron bucks card, and we would have that same type of card for transportation. So anybody could purchase it, and we would have a discount for those that would purchase that card, because it makes it a lot easier for us from an administrative end.
Chris?
Yes. Jennifer, what percentage of your riders pay a donation currently?
Well, to be honest with you, it's a donation-based, you know, every month is different. I was actually looking at October and November, just to give you an example, like in October, we collected $677 in donations for the month, and in November, we collected 392. So it kind of varies, you know, again, you look at seasons, you know, when we go into winter, you know, there's less, you know, people are a little bit more resistant to get out, you know, especially when there's ice and snow, you know, versus the summer months when the weather's nice, you know, people are more apt to, you know, want to get out and about. So, you know, there's a lot of reasons that people, you know, use the transportation system. So to be honest with you, I couldn't tell you the specific number of how many people do donation, because, you know, we really, it's a donation. So.
But do you have any understanding on how many people then ride or take rides on your service, so we could get a rough percentage based off of?
Yeah, Sue, I mean, we typically, in October, we had 600, we did, we provided 631 rides. In November, we had 679 rides. Yeah, you know, as far as the percentage, I could certainly work with our dispatcher and get that number, but it would be a lower number of the people that typically don't pay a donation.
Well, I mean, just to keep it simple, if every single rider had only gone to Westford, and 600 rides, call it 600, our number is 1,800, and we got 600 donations.
Correct, right.
And then we got 300 and so much.
Right.
So we're talking about at most one-sixth.
Right.
So that's probably less than that. Okay.
And I, like I said, and I think Nancy also stated, I do feel like that we can cover those that are in a hardship situation.
Right, but I guess, I guess from Chris's standpoint, we're not, we're not talking about going from 85% to 100. We're talking about going from 15% to 100. That's a much bigger lift. So Chris, another question I think you had?
Yeah, so Jennifer, you mentioned a survey. Can you tell us how many people responded to that survey, please?
Oh, gosh. Between the multi, yeah, multifamily housing survey.
I thought it was 77, Jennifer.
I don't want to guess.
77 people?
I can't tell you that off the top of my head.
I think so. Okay, so it's a pretty low number. So I guess where I'm going with this is that there's not been a lot of great communication to our senior community about this plan baseline. Sounds like you might be preparing to do that, but the survey certainly didn't seem like a great way of getting the word out, so.
Well, we, we actually put it on the town and the COA website. We also provided it to people at the senior center. We also advertised it in our newsletter, so I, you know, maybe that doesn't seem like we communicated it well, but that, those were the measures that we used.
Andrea, do you have a follow-up?
Well, I was just going to say, but if they're not going to implement it until fiscal year 25, then you've got six months to get the word out and to do the education that I think Chris is talking about, and that does need to be done.
Well, I guess, which raised a logical question of, in the current budget that we'll be hearing in about half an hour, what is the assumption in that budget for fees? Nothing, or is this built into that budget?
No, we did not include that in our budget.
Okay. John, do you have a question, I think?
Oh, yeah, I got all my questions, I think.
So any comments from the audience?
I got, I do have a question. What's the urgency of deciding it tonight?
Well, I mean, we've kind of been putting this off, and, you know, our senior population is aware that we're, we're looking at a fee-based system. We haven't got any really resistance to move into a fee-based system. You know, people understand that there's some people that don't pay. They also understand the value of the service, and, you know, we're just trying to be able to operate a service to be able to meet the need. And we know that right now the town, you know, I don't think can probably take on, you know, the cost that we're having to put in currently. And, you know, we only have our LRTA funding, and that certainly doesn't cover the costs of the needs of the riders that we're, that we're, that we've been transporting, and it's certainly not going to cover the additional increases.
Scott, I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, because I was just doing some math.
I'm just curious, do we know what other communities do?
Some of them have fee bills, some of them.
Yeah, I mean, you know, different communities do different things. Some, you know, some people have a donation, some have a fee-based system.
Some have no charge.
We did look at that, but again, you know, we're just looking at being able to keep up with the need and the cost of running this program.
Okay, John.
Jennifer, what is the cost of running this program per year?
Well, let's see, we have 100. I would say probably close to about $130,000.
Okay, can I, I mean, Chris, I see she has her hand up.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is that the board needs some more information. So I'm committed to working with Jennifer over the next few weeks to understanding if everyone pays a fee, how much that would account for, how much would that include in the budget, and also helping to understand what our surrounding communities might be charging for transportation if the board wishes to have that information and go in that direction.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need more facts, and I'd also like to have, normally if something is coming up involving money, cost, I hear from residents. I've heard from no seniors on this, which is very rare, for something that affects pocketbooks, so that makes me wonder again just how well the word's gotten out. So a little more time to get that word spread might be good, too.
Thank you.
Oh, Diane? Well, I guess you can go to the microphone, though. Sorry.
Sorry, Nancy. Diane, 122 Depot, is that $8 per one-way round trip, just out of curiosity?
It would be round trip. It's the same as they have been paying for many years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, I'm hearing that Chris has volunteered to defer this, get more information. I'd be happy with that. I'm guessing the board would be as well? Okay, so John?
Just one other question. Do we have a sense of what the impact, you know, who the frequent riders are, the ones that need it the most, and what this impact is on their budget on a monthly basis?
Well, I mean, we could, I don't know how you would really, that's kind of asking a lot, you know, some people don't feel real comfortable disclosing, you know, what their income is and their expenses, you know.
But we are assuming, we are.
I don't know exactly how you would want us to get that information.
Well, we are assuming that.
Except just ask a.
No, we are assuming that if individuals can't pay, that there is some other mechanism for that to happen, either nonprofits or other organizations. We don't know how big that hole is, and therefore how reasonable that assumption would be. So I think we don't want to ask individuals, but I think we need to get some assessment of, maybe Allison will have an idea of, you know, knowing who rides and knowing situations, just to get ballpark.
We did ask the question on the survey if people would be willing to get a subsidy, and a lot of people said no. Some people didn't know what a subsidy was.
Right, but you also got sensitive response. I think we'll, we'll let Kristen take over this, but I do want to get a feel for also just what we're assuming here in terms of the size of the needed relief and where that would come from, because it's not clear to me that we know that in enough detail to say yes or no. Okay.
I think the question also is, you know, do we have someone that rides five days a week? What is the impact on that person? How many riders do we have riding five days a week? So I think, John, I understand your question. We don't need to know who that person is. We just need to know the number of riders, the number of rides they take per week, and what that impact would be on them as well. We can do that.
So congrats, Tom, it'll be on your plate for another future meeting. Thank you, Jennifer and Nancy.
All right, thank you.
Next up is the 715, oh, sorry. Our next item is, at 715, is a public hearing to consider Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, establishing a 25 mile power speed limit for 70 Boston Road to the Town Common, Boston Road, from 70 Boston Road to the Town Common, and for Griffin Road. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, we do need to, so I'll move to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea? Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Adam and I. Tom, I hope you're out there, there you are, I see. So come to the microphone and present the case or cases, as the case may be.
Case or cases, sure, so.
Tom Hinkle.
Tom Hinkle, you know, dress or my role or both?
This is your role.
Okay, Chair of Pedestrian Safety. So I guess, first of all, just to be clear, the Pedestrian Safety Committee voted on recommending Griffin Road, that we adopt 17C for Griffin Road. We didn't vote on Boston Road, which I think that came to this agenda through a resident request, is my understanding, and not from Pedestrian Safety. So I have, you know, data and information about Griffin Road I can share. Should I just, should I go forward to that, or do you want to discuss both?
With Griffin, then we'll ask for whoever commented, whoever asked for it from.
Okay, great, so.
Many people here from Boston Road, I'm sure one of them could speak to it.
Yes, right. So in our November 1st meeting, we voted to recommend that the Select Board apply 17C to Griffin Road. We had before that done a survey of residents of Griffin Road and of the abutting roads to see how many residents were walking or biking on Griffin Road, and what kinds of, were they concerned about speed and what mitigation measures would they support? We'd heard from numerous residents concerned about speed on Griffin Road this year and over the years was the reason for that survey. So we got 121 responses to the survey, 111 of them, that's 91%, do walk, run, or bike on Griffin Road regularly, and. that's ninety-one percent, do walk, run or bike on Griffin Road regularly, and ninety-four of them, or seventy-eight percent, were concerned about speeding. Of the mitigation measures we listed in the survey, by far the most popular was reducing the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five, which is what seventeen C does, that had support from eighty-one residents or just over, just two-thirds. So, that's pretty strong support for this measure. It's not too surprising that so many people walk on Griffin Road, I think as the Pedestrian Safety Committee, we always prioritize roads, first we think about schools and kids getting to school, Griffin Road doesn't connect to a school, so it's not in that first tier of priority, but it does connect to Jack Walsh Field and to the Bruce Freeman, so it kind of hits the second tier. There's also trail connections to Old Lowell and to Texas Road, so it's not at all surprising, there's a fair amount of pedestrian activity on Griffin Road. There's not any kind of pedestrian accommodation on Griffin Road, it's a relatively narrow shoulder, so I think it makes sense that residents on that road are concerned about speeding cars, and that speed of cars is a real issue, you're right, you're right there next to them when you're on that road. I don't know how many of you have walked or ridden a bike on Griffin Road, but you definitely are aware of the cars. It's not surprising, we've heard from residents again and again. So, I guess that's our, our main reason for supporting it, I think that the town adopted seventeen C, recognizing the value of protecting pedestrian safety, and I think, I mentioned this at town meeting when we were voting on this, but it, it's one of the only measures that gives us as a town the ability to prioritize vulnerable road users over cars. So, most of what MassDOT and the uniform standards and all of the traffic engineering stuff does is prioritize moving people quickly in cars, in my opinion, usually at the expense of people's ability to go out and walk and be healthy and ride bikes and get their children to soccer games. So, if we as a town value those things, which I believe we should, I think we should take every measure we can to protect pedestrians. This is, it's not all the measures I wish it was, but it's the measure that's available to us, it's the most obvious, and some of the committee members referred to it as a no-brainer, I guess I would echo that.
Thanks. Any questions from the board? No? Okay, and any comments from, yeah, please come forward. Bob, you're next.
Ursula Kehney, Colonial Drive. So, I've been living there tw- twenty-four, twenty-four years, and while maybe reducing the speed limit will help with some things on that road, the visibility of that road because of trees and telephone poles are some of the bigger problems. Because, yeah, it's a pretty narrow windy road, but people, I mean, we're really not flying up, up on that road, we're not. We're trying to get home, we're trying to get our kids to school, or to the rehearsals, or to whatever else we have going on, and some of the other proposals, like one-way and all of that, like, everyone has to be careful on that road, but the town can do something about some of the trees and work with the state and whatever on telephone poles and things like that, those are the bigger problems. If there was a little bit more space on some of those turns, then it wouldn't even be an issue, or as much of an issue, because there's plenty of other roads in this town that are windy and whatever, and people aren't, you know, complaining. And also, one last thing I want to just take a point on, you got how many surveys back?
A hundred twenty-one.
How many residents live in that entire neighborhood that you surveyed?
That I don't actually know, I'm afraid.
And that's a problem, because percentages do matter in this case, thank you.
I wish, I wish, I appreciate your comments, thank you. I wish, moving telephone poles is not as easy as you think it is, if it was, we have a lot of them moved in this town.
So, Jennifer Payne, forty-four Griffin Road, a question about if thirty miles an hour, the current speed limit, isn't regulated, then how is twenty-five going to be any different if it's not regulated? So, that's a practical consideration. I'd like to invite you to comment about what happens with driver's behavior when you widen the visibility?
Sure.
And I'll leave it there to answer those.
Yeah, so I, I think, I mean, this comes up every time we talk about speed limits, that, that residents say, well, we're not enforcing the speed limits that's, that's there, but I, I think drivers do in fact respond to speed limits, it's not perfect, there are other things that have a bigger impact, but it, the impact is not zero. And, I mean, when the police presented to us, you know, they point out, often our surveys say, we would like more police presence. Actually, in this survey, there was more support for this speed limit change than for more police presence, which I was surprised by, but obviously, we don't, unless we want to pay for more police officers and patrols, we can't put more police on every road where they're wanted, right? So, I think, you, ideally you consider the question of speed separately from the question of, like, whatever enforcement we're doing, what I always imagine is the driver who sees the sign, right? You, you see the sign that says thirty and you're running late, and you say, oh, I'm only going forty, okay, not so bad. You see the sign that says twenty-five and you're running late, so, oh my goodness, I'm going forty, I better go thirty-five. So, you know, I would rather you went twenty-five, I'd rather you went twenty, but whatever that difference is, makes a difference, and we know, I guess just I'll mention about speeds, that, that difference, that the impact of a pedestrian at twenty-five miles an hour, or twenty-three miles an hour, has a twenty-five percent chance of a serious injury. At, at thirty-nine, it's a seventy-five percent chance of a serious injury. So, that little five mile an hour, ten mile an hour difference matters. And then just the thing she asked me to comment on, widening roads will tend to increase speed. Paul Sterick can tell you all about how drivers respond to the design of the road more than the speed signs, so there is, if you, if you widen the road to make it feel safer, you might in fact have the opposite effect.
Okay, so Bob, do you want to talk about Griffin or, or...
Boston Road.
Okay, so, one, one second, so Bill, did you want to do Griffin or Boston? Well, I would do Griffin, Griffin first, then we'll do Boston second, so...
I have a comment, but it's, it's more general than that.
Okay, so, Griffin Road?
I want to talk about Griffin Road.
Okay.
My name's Mark Schleidenhoffen, Six Mark Vincent Drive. Couple of things about, I walk Griffin Road from Jack Walsh Field down to the conservation land and off of Texas Road, and also go the other way, all the way to the Bruce Freeman Trail, walk that trail all the time with my dog, so it's a, Griffin Road is kind of particular in that it's, it is inconsistent with road, and there's no real shoulder for it. The shoulders that exist for pedestrians to walk on are, you know, there's sections of that road that have guardrails that force the pedestrians to walk on the middle of the, on the edge of the road, there's, there's, which is, in my mind, kind of ridiculous, we have guardrails on that road and Old Lowell Road does not, which has steeper embankments than Griffin Road. So, that's one thing. There's stone walls along that road that I, you know, I can't, even if there, there's a car coming, and I do walk against the traffic to, you know, I, I want to be seeing the cars coming at me, I can't even get to the side of the road because the stone walls are there. So, these are things that, you know, the town, I would think by eminent domain, they could remedy some of these things to make it a little bit more consistent and easier for pedestrians to walk on a soft shoulder. I'm not looking for a sidewalk, I'm just looking for a place I can step out of the way. And the, in the summertime, that road is full of poison ivy. So, there's really no way I, even if I wanted to get to the side of the road, I'm going to step in a bunch of poison ivy. So, you know, things like that could, are easily, I think, an easy remedy for the town to, you know, make the vegetation more forgiving for pedestrians. Some of the trees along that road are right along the edge, I can't, you have to step around those in the middle of the road. There's a sidewalk that goes from Cloverleaf Lane along the side of Griffin Road and stops, not even down to Koala Bear, which is like the next street over from the new development. It's, I just can't understand why the town allowed that to happen, where that sidewalk, it's like a hundred feet of sidewalk, and that would made that little section of Griffin Road a little bit easier to walk on. The, you know, I understand about telephone poles, but none of, there's like three telephone poles on that road that have reflectors. So, if you're a driver trying to ride that road at, in the dark of night, and it is a dark road, there's not a lot of streetlights on it, you can hardly, you can't hardly see where you're going. That's an easy fix for the telephone company to do, to put some reflectors on the telephone poles, so that people can see where they're going. So, these are easy things that I think the town could do to make that road safer for pedestrians, and I'm not looking to make it, you know, like Brickton Road in Billerica, where they have speed pillows and sidewalks on both sides, but I, I think there's some easy fixes that could take place for Griffin Road to make it safer for pedestrians. And the, and I think frankly, the new signs that they have, the flashing signs that tell you your speed, has been very helpful. I think people are, see those signs, and they go slower, and it's telling you your, you know, how fast you're going, and I think it's been very helpful for the drivers not realizing how fast you're going. So, I think, in that regard, that's been very helpful. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dan?
Kristen mentioned that two hundred people were sent that survey, and we also have an attendee with a hand raised.
Okay, so, well, we'll do you first, then we'll do, well, I'll take you first, go ahead, so go ahead.
Bob Benoit, fifty-one Griffin Road, and I live on one of the straightaways on Griffin Road. So, I know the town, or some, the state did an audit two years ago, it was a road safety audit, the average speed was forty-two and a half miles an hour, and that was with a thirty mile an hour speed, posted speed limit. Quite frankly, I don't think twenty-five miles an hour is going to really make a whole lot of difference relative to the, the speed. I think some of the other suggestions that have come up are good ones, but the speed, I don't think it's going to make any difference.
Okay.
That's just personally.
Thanks. So, yeah, who's on, is you, is that, is that for Griffin or for Boston Road?
They just put their hand down. Jane, are you still out there with a comment? Hand's still down, so I think I loaded.
Okay, in that case, Bob, sorry to keep waiting, but I wanted to...
Wait, there's, there's somebody else who's got their hand, hand up.
Jane has, is on.
And Ken Deslitz has his, has his hand up.
Okay, well, go ahead, Jane.
Hi, I've lived on Griffin Road for about twenty years, a little bit over. One of my questions is the two speed monitoring signs that have been set up on both ends of Griffin. I know they record data, is there information available from those that tells the average speed that you see on Griffin Road? Because I have not experienced excessive speeding in my twenty-some-odd years there, and I think most of the drivers are pretty courteous and aware of pedestrians, bicyclists, dogs, et cetera, there's always going to be outliers, but I'm curious if there was data available on the average speed you've seen on Griffin.
I can speak, so the, when the police came to our pedestrian safety meeting when we were looking at it, they were cautious to say that's not data from those signs, they're not a speed study, that's, so, these are all numbers you're supposed to take, you know, not too seriously, but their, their impression, both from those signed data and from police officers on the road, would be in agreement with what you said, that they, they did not see lots of excessive speeding, so I think, now, what does excessive mean? I think they mean most of the cars were thirty to thirty-five miles an hour, somewhere in that zone, they, they weren't seeing average speeds that were high.
But what, what happens, you know, where my, my Pet Safety Committee hat, when you see the sign, it, it works, you slow down.
Right.
And so, a speed study puts the tape in the road and checks it without any obvious signage, you see a police cruiser, you slow down. So, so I, to look at the data of the signs, I think it's helpful, but it's not really conclusive to, to actual behavior.
Right.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
One more person online, I believe?
We have two more now, Ken Deslitz.
Okay, let's go to Ken first, then.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Ken Deslitz, and I live on, with my wife Nancy, on Deslitz. We have been living, we live on Colonial Drive, which, you know, abuts Griffin Road, and any, anytime we have to go anywhere, we have to go on Griffin Road, so we're on there a lot. We have been here in Westford for thirty-four years, we love the town. First of all, just our general comment, I think a lot of people have brought out a lot of excellent points this evening for the town to consider, including the telephone poles, in fact, someone mentioned the poison ivy issue. The telephone poles also require you to walk in the road, since some of these telephone poles are physically located like right on the edge of the road, you have no choice but to walk on the road to get by it. The biggest issue, though, that I have is the bike crossing, and I'm sure this is probably something that nobody wants to talk about, but since I'm on Griffin Road a lot, I see and have witnessed and experienced close encounters on hitting bicyclists, and it's a, it's a problem waiting, there's a serious problem waiting to happen on this road. As you know, that Westford actually has three crossings, bike crossings, one's on twenty-seven, and the other one's on two-twenty-five. And just to give you an example of what I've experienced within the last year or so, again, this is not on Griffin Road, but it's on two-twenty-five. I'm sitting at the light, the conjunction, junction of two-twenty, two-twenty-five, twenty-seven, I'm facing, I'm, I'm facing north, and I'm going to be taking a right turn onto twenty-seven to go home. So, I'm waiting at the light, we have to stop, you know, allow, we have to back off on the stop area because there is a bike path. They have their own light, as you're, you may be aware of. I have a green light, I'm first in line, I hit the gas pedal, bicyclist goes right by me like three hundred miles an hour. It was just a miracle that I didn't hit that person. The other things, though, I've, I've actually seen on Griffin Road, we have cyclists go by at whatever speed, fifteen, twenty miles an hour, head down, do not look, do not stop. For the most part, people do not stop at the stop sign, and they probably won't. And I re, I recall that last week, we had a couple of Westford ambulances and rescue trucks at that site, at the crossing on Griffin Road, and last year, I, so there might have been an accident, I saw a person there, they had two ambulances and a cruiser, you should be able to figure out what that problem was, I don't know. I went by it kind of like at the end, and last year, I am aware that Chelmsford, I know that's not our town, but at the Agway store, they had a, an accident of a bicyclist at that intersection. There are solutions that are available by other towns, but we should do something, you talk about safety, this is going to happen. The bicyclists feel, I believe, they feel they have the right of way, I've had some really dirty looks, like, you know, like I'm going through and I'm not going to stop. So, I am generally concerned, I ride this, so my question would be is, how do I present my concerns in a written format to the town, so at least you have some documentation on my experience, and hopefully that can help us address this issue.
You gave me a great segue, so thank you. So, because two things, one is, in fact, Chris and myself both are on Pet Safety and the Select Board, so, so we actually both like hearing all this stuff, but it's really just not the form for it, we already talked about, talked about speed zones tonight, not... We're gonna talk about speed zones tonight and everything else. So yes, if you have written comments, by all means, Senator Tom Hinkle is the Chair of Pest Safety, you write to him, but certainly Chris and I'd be happy to hear from you.
Okay.
And I would say, you know, copying Kristen Last, time manager, because, you know, she can coordinate, you know, trees are one, one department, and guardrails.
I understand, I understand.
And so, so thank you. So, but yeah, for future comments, I wanna, you know, we did, we have also got a bunch to discuss tonight. I don't wanna cut anybody off, but I wanna keep it focused on, on the speed issue. So we go, one more, hand raised, I think?
I appreciate that, and thank you.
Yeah, one more.
Oh, Don?
Yep. I'm on, so, I'm Don Gally, I live on Mark Vincent Drive, I'm also a Pedestrian Safety Committee member. And yes, there are many things that we could do on the road, but twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is what's on the agenda right now. And I have to say that reducing the speed limit will reduce the speed that people go at, I think Tom mentioned this before, that if people see a lower speed limit, they'll tend to drive a little bit lower. So it is possible to reduce speeds to a little, a little bit, to a safer level. And I did a calculation that how long it would take to drive from one end to the other of Griffin Road. If you were driving the entire length of the road, reducing the speed limit by five miles an hour, which hopefully would reduce everybody's speed by five miles an hour, would increase the amount of time to drive from one end of the road to the other for twenty-four seconds, which I think is a pretty good trade-off for an increased safety on the road. If you're living in the middle of the road, you know, you're thinking about something like ten, fifteen seconds of additional time to drive. So I don't think that's a big deal for people, for additional safety on the, on the road. I walk on the road pretty much every day, I see people, occasionally people rollerblading. I saw a couple of kids rollerblading up Colonial Drive onto Griffin Road. One of them did not stop at Griffin Road, it almost, he almost kept going onto the road. There was a car that was coming exactly at the same time. Luckily, that car was moving slowly enough so that it was able to stop before hitting the, it was a kid rollerblading. So reducing the speed increased the safety, and I think that it's, this is a measure that should be adopted.
Okay, thanks, Don.
And I agree that, that folks who said that the, the speed signs do have an effect. I, I often, often, sometimes spend time looking at the speed sign that's near Jarvis, and I can see people coming down off of Route twenty-seven. They'll start at, you know, twenty miles an hour, then sometimes get up to thirty or thirty-five miles an hour. By the time they get to the sign, they've reduced down to, usually to somewhere between twenty-five and thirty, often under twenty-five miles an hour. So the signs do make a difference, and I think reducing the speed limit will have an effect, and a positive effect on increasing safety.
Okay, thanks, Don. So, yes, so if you have questions other than speed on Griffin Road, by all means, write to Tom, Chris, myself, Kristen. And I forecast a future meeting of Pest Safety talking about Griffin Road. But with that, Bob, if you wanna discuss Boston Road, I think you've been waiting patiently for that.
Bob Crankwood, fifteen Boston Road. I just wanted to point out that I'll review what the parameters are for the state for a thickly settled area. It's a quarter of a mile with houses two-hundred feet or less between them. We certainly have a traffic issue on Boston Road. They do have a sign now down the lower end that picks up on the driver's speed, and it's often in the red. It doesn't seem to slow people down at all. What we need is the Select Board to agree to the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. However, in order to make, have teeth, the Police Department is gonna, is gonna have to get involved. And I understand their, their problem is they, they, they can't put cruisers just to sit there to pick up speeders. But I think what could happen is, while they're making their way up and down Boston Road as they go through their daily trips, if someone is in front of them and speeding, they just nail them and give them a ticket. I mean, we don't get, the problem is, we don't get any money back, basically, from the state. If a person gets a ticket, it goes to the state, we get a pittance. So there's nothing to be gained there, there's no incentive other than safety. It would have to be the cooperation of the Police Department to make it work. And especially since they're gonna redo Boston Road, and it's gonna be a smoother, wider road, it's gonna be bike lanes on both sides, we're gonna have a definite problem. I mean, speeders, when you cross Boston Road at night, you better be lit up really well because you take, you take your life in, in your hands when you do it, you have to be really careful. People have lost dogs, my people speeding and stuff like, along that line. I don't know, some of you may have known Lloyd Blanchard, he got hit one night, he crossed the road and somebody hit him. He did go to the hospital, he didn't break anything, fortunately. But I just emphasize that we've gotta do something about the speed before something happens, some kid, there's a lot of young kids now on Boston Road. They may get away from their parents and try to cross the road or something like that, and it'd be a horrible thing. And we need to control the speed, and we need the Police Department to do it. So that's my take on that.
Thank you. Yes, Bill, did you have your hand up too?
Yes, I do. I'm Bill Harmon, I live on Colonial Drive, and the reason I'd like to speak is I'd like to point out that the town of Bedford has a default value of twenty-five, default speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour for the whole town. The only exception, well, I have, I do drive through there occasionally, and I'm aware as a driver that I have to go, I have to observe the twenty-five an hour, twenty-five mile an hour speed limit at all times unless I see something different. Now, that's also true in Lexington. So the town of Bedford and Lexington too, they regard twenty-five as a useful speed, and of course, a good point was made earlier that it only costs a few extra seconds. So that's, that's the reason I would like to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else? Either, either subject?
An audience member.
Okay, one more on the audience.
Mr. Gendrow?
Okay, yep. Richard, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, sorry about that. Just a couple of comments, I'll, I'll echo the previous comment, obviously about Boston Road. I live on thirty-two Boston Road, fortunately, we're protected by a very large wall, which is, which has been hit several times in the twenty-two years we've lived, at least in this location, as well as a severe car accident getting hit coming onto Main Lane. So it's a dangerous road, it's gotten more dangerous, much more dangerous in the last twenty years or so. We've reflected our opinion in the discussions about the, the new construction. To be honest, I've been very disappointed in the approach the board has taken with respect to the design of the new Boston Road. We, we have asked for, the original design included islands, elevated islands. The traffic engineers at the time indicated that that, that was definitely a positive for slowing traffic down. That was deleted, the last design, it's been almost, I think it's been maybe two years since we've had, had a meeting relative to the construction. The last design drawings I saw included some cobblestones to try to create some, some kind of psychological barrier to try to slow people down. So anything that can be done here to slow, slow the traffic down would be greatly appreciated. It was previously commented, and we reflected this in a design review. Boston Road's gonna be wider after the construction. It's gonna look, my opinion is, it's gonna look like a racetrack to a lot of people coming up from four-ninety-five to, to the center of town. So we're only, you know, what we've seen already, which is bad enough, traffic forty, forty-five miles an hour flying by, a lot of trucks, obviously, a lot of traffic coming off of four-ninety-five. I understand that, but we also need to be safe here. Looking at, I took a look at the overview on the, on the mass site, and I see that Acton, Air, Bolton, Kyle, Al, Conked, Harvard, Littleton, Sudbury, they've gone townwide with this. And not just talking about one or two roads, and even Harvard, which didn't go townwide, has a long list of roads. So I'm wondering why we're talking about one or two roads in town to apply this law to. It seems to me that it would be a no-brainer to go townwide. I mean, why are we even talking one, one street at a time here? This seems, this seems rather callous, to be honest. That's all I have to say. Thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. No, well, I mean, we, we have the discussion about townwide at a different date, but tonight is, is these two parcels, and it's a fair question, by all means, to ask. But with that in mind, you know, all these comments, is there a, a peril of the board on, on one or both of these, these roads? Yeah, John?
I have a question on, on Boston Road. I thought that because of the length that we have, we couldn't do that until we redo the road. That the length of our, our main to the state-owned part of the road wasn't long enough. Is that true? Because I'm all for it.
I don't, I don't...
And I thought we would have to wait until we redo the road and then do the twenty-five miles an hour speed limit.
Steve Crow, Director of Public Works. So the town currently has jurisdiction over Boston Road from Main Street to about forty-four to forty-five Boston Road. So if you were to opt-in, if you were to apply seventeen C now, you could only establish it to the, to the state highway layout. Once the town completes the project, the town will have jurisdiction from Main Street all the way to the four-ninety-five interchange, and then at that point, you could extend those limits if you chose to do so.
Okay.
You couldn't go beyond the current state highway layout right now of forty-four to Boston.
Where is that? You said forty-four, forty-five?
Just past Crown Road, headed down that way.
Just past Crown Road?
Yes.
So we could do twenty-five miles an hour from Main to just past Crown Road, and then it would change over to thirty, and then when it get down, it'd change over to forty?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And one of the challenges with that is that there is no current MUTC compliant signage that tells you where that twenty-five miles per hour would end. And we couldn't put up signage after the state highway layout telling people that it's thirty miles per hour. So there would be some confusion for drivers. Now, the town could put up some signage on its own, but it wouldn't necessarily be compliant.
Okay.
So drivers may not know what that means, but it would give some people who know that they're in a thickly settled district, an idea that that's the end of it.
And coming in the opposite direction, we'd have a sign right there that said twenty-five.
Correct, yes.
Hypothetically, if I came out of the town center down the hill, it's gonna say twenty-five miles per hour at the top of the hill, I'm not gonna know I crossed the state line, so I'll, I'll think it's still twenty-five all the way down to the fire station, right?
There are advisory signs, I believe, on the state portion now that say thirty miles per hour, so some people may continue to...
If they, if they miss the vote and still think it's twenty-five, that's no harm.
Exactly, that's, that's my point.
That's the point.
Anybody other comments on the board? Okay, so I need a, a motion of some sort to...
No, there's a comment.
We have one more coming online, we're gonna call it quits after this one. Okay, John, you're live.
Great, thank you. John Schwab, twenty-three Boston Road, resident, coming up on twenty years, and I guess I don't wanna sound as though I'm piling on to what Bob and Richard said, so it makes no sense to echo their sentiments, but I think for all of us who have been on this road for a long time, the short version is, I'm thankful that my children are older and they have some smarts because you take your life into your hands every time you walk or, walk or try and cross the street. So for the purposes of my comments tonight and for this meeting, I think there's a lot of things that need to happen, from the construction drawings, to the redesign of the road, to anything related to public safety and the police officers and their time and, you know, the concept of them being able to enforce any law that exists, whether or not it's thirty or twenty-five. But all I can do is unequivocally support the move to try and make it twenty-five miles an hour for seventeen C in any capacity that that can be, because if it lowers it, maybe people will do what some of the panel is, and what some of the comments have made tonight, that people will actually respond to that. I can tell you that my house is just close to town center from the current sign hanging on the pole, and nobody slows down. So everybody who says they slow down, they don't slow down. Thirty-seven, forty-two, forty-seven, I saw fifty-one miles an hour yesterday as I was pulling out of my driveway to go to work. If it's twenty-five, it's gonna be at least better than thirty. So, but I think for the purposes of the motion and the opt-in tonight, I would support it, and we will tackle all the other things separately from this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So...
So why don't we split them up?
Okay, so, first Griffin Road.
You know, I, I, I hear what all of you are saying, certainly there are several things that we can look at in terms of making Griffin Road safer. You know, I don't walk Griffin Road, but I am a walker on, around this town, and so I certainly understand the concerns I'm hearing from people who walk or bicycle or rollerblade. So since the only thing before us tonight is whether or not to adopt seven C, seventeen C for Griffin Road, I will move that we adopt general law, chapter seventeen C for Griffin Road, and lower the speed limit there for, till twenty-five miles per hour.
Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay, so, excuse me, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Adam, aye. Okay, so that leaves us with Boston Road from the common to number seventy, but functionally number forty-four, whatever the, Chris?
Yeah, I have a question for our town engineer, since he is here, and you may have answered this, Paul, but is there an opportunity to do anything with that design at this point?
Paul Stare, Town Engineer, you're asking, can we redesign Boston Road?
I'm asking, I'm sure people would love that, but no. I'm asking, to some points that were made earlier, there were some, let's call them speed control measures that were in the earlier designs, those have been sort of...
Correct.
Minimized. Could they be brought back? Could other speed control measures be brought into the conversation at this point, or are we too far along in the design process to do that?
So we did implement in a previous design the raised islands that the previous speaker mentioned, that in my professional opinion would be the most effective way to reduce speeds on Boston Road. But, and we did, through the design process, maintain the real estate for that, so we're, as written now, it is gonna have flush, a pavement treatment that's flushed to the ground. It will either look like cable, cobbles, or it will be cobbles. So the real estate will be there. I anticipated that after I retire and the project is done, and the speeds are seen to be, are, are, people are uncomfortable with the speeds, the real estate will be there for you to go back, put the curbs in, put in shrubberies or landscaping or whatever you wanna do to make it look nice, and that will effectively slow the speed down. We could, if I were given that direction, we could ask as a change order. The plans are all done, they're getting ready to advertise the project now. We could, if you wanted the raised islands, we could put those back in.
We could do it as an alternate, couldn't we?
No, they would, we're, we're well, well within the hundred and ten percent agreement that we have, meaning we can make changes to the plans as long as they don't exceed a hundred and ten percent of twelve million dollars that we're getting from the state to build this project. So it's possible.
Is, in your opinion, that the...
Is, in your opinion, that this would be a pricely, pricey add-on at this point?
No, no, it was just a matter of adding the curb and, you know, modifying the plans. It would probably be a change order at this point, because again, the plans are all approved. And we could wait until the project is done, and then just do it as a, as a municipal contract on our, that would prob, that we, we'd have to pay more directly for that. But that would, in my opinion, does have, and I've seen it in several other communities, they're becoming more popular now because of their effectiveness. It's, it's the raised island that you'd see where the, there may or may not be signage, or may or not be some landscaping there, some salt-tolerant shrubs or something, but it just gives the, the driver a visual cue to slow down, because you have to narrow the, you have to go through something. So it just, it's an, it's an, it's an instinct, because we all operate our vehicles subconsciously. We're on autopilot. We're not paying attention to signs, we're not looking at, we're looking at how we feel safe. If we feel safe and it seems reasonable, that's how we perform, except fifteen percent of the people who are very willing to operate their vehicles too fast, are distracted, are under the influence, are angry.
So to the point, some, some of the residents made with the fact that the road is being widened, that might increase speeds, these deterrents would have the effect of making people actually...
Yeah.
Take note of what's in the roadway and slow down.
I don't, I don't want to redesign Boston Road, so what I would suggest we do is, no, no, so what I would like to do is, Tom and myself and Kristen can make this an agenda item for a future meeting, because how long do we have to put a change order?
Yeah, that, that opportunity is passed years ago.
Right.
So we would, we would wait for the project to start.
Okay, so, we'll decide it tonight, we can bring it up at a future meeting, because it's, it's worth discussing in more time than we have tonight, right? So...
I don't know why. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to move forward with making that idea right now. I mean, I'd like to be able to give the people that have come here tonight some satisfaction that we're listening and we're going to do something.
But we, it's not on our agenda to do that tonight. I don't think it would be appropriate to do that.
If you want to advertise it, so that others can take...
So I, I would, I, I agree with you. I want to discuss, I appreciate the comments, I just want to do this correctly, which I think means...
I stand corrected, you're absolutely right.
Yep. That's fine. Tom, are you guys saying something?
Just, just your point, Scott. So we will look for a time to, to have a discussion on Boston Road. Also, I really appreciate the comments on Griffin Road, so we'll also look for an agenda item, probably an old business to come back and look at the suggestions like better reflection and visibility on the telephone poles, some approach to the vegetation, poison ivy along the route there. So thank you for bringing that up. If you've got more comments, please send them to Kristen, and we'll look for agenda items soon for both of us.
Okay, so I, I'm going to make a motion.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to move that we reduce the speed limit on Boston Road from Main Street to, well, I will say forty-four, forty-four, forty-five.
State line?
To the state line, whatever it is.
Okay. There's a second.
That's my motion.
Second?
Okay, all in favor, Chris? I can come back.
No, no, I mean, I, I do think that this is, this is really tough for me, right? So I have been the chair of the Pedestrian Safety Committee for years, I'm a huge proponent of, you know, trying to make our roads safer, and, you know, in the context of Boston Road and the improvements that we're going to see, we are making substantial headway into improving pedestrian and bicycle safety by adding bike lanes, adding a sidewalk along the entirety of the road. I would have loved to see a sidewalk on both sides of the road, I think that was a big miss, unfortunately, on our part, and I think that would address some of the concerns about people trying to cross the road when it was, you know, speeds are high. I do think that Public Safety, DPW, have made some pretty compelling remarks regarding, you know, the challenges associated with changing the speed limit on this road at this time. I personally would like to see the road redesigned, I'd like to see the speed control, vertical controls put in place, I'd like to see the speed limit be uniform, I'd like us to collect data through the speed control devices that will be put in place on that road before I necessarily say, go ahead and just put a few, you know, quarter mile of this road under twenty-five C at this point. So I would be unfortunately a no at this point.
Okay. Andrea?
I certainly appreciate everything you said, and I, and I also agree with everything you said, but we have a problem now, and we are at least two years away, I believe, from even construction starting on Boston Road, and that's even assuming that we're on time. And so to address the immediate problem, I am going to vote in favor of this, and when the time comes, if we can redesign, add sidewalks, add shrubberies, islands, I think we can look at, we can look at it again, but we have a problem that I think needs to be addressed now, so I would vote in favor of it.
Tom?
For reasons similar to Andrea, I vote aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm with Andrea, actually, as well, so aye, so four to one. So with that, thank you all for your time, and we're not going to go long. Do us comment, Chief?
I wasn't really given the chance before you, you guys took your vote. I just kind of vote at this point, I think.
Sorry.
I just, I, I think that artificially reducing the speed limit, I'll turn it to the mic.
So I know, I know that you already talked, took the vote in, at the pleasure of the board, if the board is in favor of ninety-seventeen C and it's posted that way, we'll do our best to enforce it, but I do believe that artificially deflating that speed limit is actually going to cause a unrealistically low speed limit, that can actually lead to more crashes. It's going to promote two distinct drivers, that is, ones that'll actually attempt to observe that speed limit, and those driving it what they feel is reasonable and prudent. I believe that the eighty-five percentile that we've been able to, time and time again, document on those speed boards is in the high thirties, which I know is not great for the people that live on Boston Road. We do try to enforce it as much as we can. We ran close to a hundred and seventy radar assignments on Boston Road, and we have written well over seven hundred violations on Boston Road. Granted, that's the entire length of Boston Road. But what I worry about is if we reduce that speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour when we know, contrary to science and our traffic engineer information, where speed limits are based on the actual, an unconstitutional situation, where if we stop a vehicle for a twenty-five mile an hour violation, so say they're doing thirty-six miles an hour on Boston Road, which everybody would probably feel comfortable with, without any sort of road modifications, and we secure some sort of evidence that leads to a major arrest, those types of things can be thrown out of court, because the constitutionality of that artificial decrease of the speed limit, contrary to science, will be considered by court. So that's what I worry about. It's, it's almost creating a speed trap that is, you know, if we were in St. Louis or a different state where the office, you know, where citations would affect the amount of money that a department generates, you see it in the news all the time, where they'll post a, a speed limit that's lower than what the road is designed for, they get sued. So that is my concern. I tried to put that in the different packets, so I'm sorry that I didn't try to make, you know, I stood up because I was trying to get your attention so I could make the comment prior to the vote.
Tom, you're the chair, it's this year.
No, so, that's, that's all I have to say, but the ninety-seventeen C, the will of the board, we will do our best to enforce it.
Thanks. So, sorry, that was, that was all on me, I didn't see it there.
So this was a public hearing, so I'm going to move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, all. And now for the other highlight of the night, which is the budget. I'll head over to Kristen for a presentation. I just want to say upfront a couple things. Yeah, this has been a, a long process, and I want to, you know, thank Kristen, Dan, our department heads, and also our Bush Task Force, Tom and Valerie as the chairs, also residents who are on that, because a lot of, a lot of hours have gone into quantifying, you know, the issues that you're going to hear tonight, so, you know, thanks to all of them. And then secondly, this is getting sort of presented as, as here is the impacts on schools, this is the town, I just want to reiterate, as we have for past several years, this is one budget, by statute, we have to look at it as school and town, but we are one town and one budget, that's how we are treating it as a, as a select board and a school committee, and a finance committee. So with that, I will, actually, I think, do you want to help out to your committee hearing, or you want to keep it?
Of course.
Okay.
I don't see anybody else, Christina.
Okay, so we'll keep it just as a...
For not comment, it'll be okay.
You can comment individually, just can't, just can't deliberate, so. Okay, with that in mind, Kristen, please, sorry for being late with you, but take it away.
Sure. Thank you very much, Select Board members and members of the public, for tuning in this evening for the fiscal twenty-five budget message. Just before I start sharing my screen, I want to reiterate to the public that the majority of the documents that you're going to hear about tonight are on the town website, under the budget page, as well as under town meeting. I also sent an email to all board and committee members on Friday with this information, so if you'd like to share that with your neighbors, and we also share this information on social media. We're trying to do as best we can to outreach to as many as we can. I will also include all of this information in my newsletter, that will likely go out on Friday of this week. Additionally, the Budget Task Force and I and several staff members have prepared a multitude of videos to explain the work of the Budget Task Force, as well as the budget as it stands today, and some of those terminologies that are really foreign to most who do not operate in municipal government on a day-to-day basis. So we'll be getting those videos up on the website and through Westford Cat, which I think will be a great tool to help the public understand not only our fiscal twenty-five budget for, but municipal budgets as a whole. So I will walk through a series of slides this evening. This is a little bit untraditional to what you're generally seeing in your budget hearings from the past, as many of you know. So I will go through a short overview of what our budget objectives are, what the definition of Proposition Two and a Half is, that's a state term, and I want to just make sure everyone's on a level playing field related to that. We'll review the twenty-five budget that reduces services to stay within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half, which we are restricted to under state law. We'll then review a second budget that includes a Proposition Two and a Half override, and I want to be clear that these two options are still very much under consideration. This is first of many presentations that the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, and public will hear, so we appreciate the feedback that will come after this meeting and into the future. We'll review our reserves, our capital, and our debt service. Then we will round out by giving you a timeline of what the rest of the fiscal year twenty-five budget process looks like, and then, most importantly, we want to give you the tools of how the public can stay involved in this process, because, again, this is a very public process, and all town residents should stay engaged related to this. So a few months ago, the Select Board set some policy and budget objectives for fiscal twenty-five. We'd like to adhere to that fiscal twenty-five budget direction. We really would like to incorporate ideas and data that came from the Budget Task Force final report. The Budget Task Force was formed in May of twenty-twenty-three, when it became apparent that many budget challenges would be before us in fiscal twenty-five. Recently, the Select Board gave guidance to myself and town staff that they wish to see two budgets this evening. One, a reduced services budget that fits within the Proposition Two and a Half constraints, and one, a level service budget with budget task force efficiencies that require an override. Also, we want to sustain our town assets through capital investment. We have shared mission statements and organizational charts within the budget document that was provided to accompany this PowerPoint presentation. There's a description of significant services and operational challenges, changes in that budget document, and again, as I noted in my opening, all of this is available on the town meeting page and the budget page through westfordma.gov. And if there's anyone who does not have access to a webpage, we are happy to get you access. If you just call the town manager's office or stop by, we can certainly get you access to that. So first of all, a level set, what is a Proposition Two and a Half override? This is a word that's often bounced around, but frequently not known by many in the public. So Proposition Two and a Half is a Massachusetts law that was enacted in nineteen eighty that actually places a limit of two and a half percent on the amount of property tax revenue that a community can raise through real and personal property taxes. So one community cannot raise it by seven percent, and another by two percent, and another by ten percent. Every municipality, three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, are only allowed to raise by two and a half percent. There's a common misconception that each individual property tax bill can only increase by two and a half percent, but as you heard in the tax classification hearing with the assessor a few months ago, the tax levy as a whole increases by two and a half percent, and then it's divided over the full and fair cash value within the town. When the levy limit increase is not sufficient to maintain or expand governmental services, the town has the option to approve a budget with cut services, which you'll hear about this evening, or to approve a Proposition Two and a Half override to allow for level services or higher than level services. This evening, we're going to talk about a level services budget. A Proposition Two and a Half override is override permanently on the tax levy, and to pass that, the Select Board must place that override question on the town meeting warrant, and then on the local election, and both of those votes must require a majority to pass of both of those bodies. So I want to level set again and remind the board and the public of the fiscal twenty-four tax levy. That's calculated by creating the fiscal twenty-three tax levy limit, the Proposition Two and a Half increase, which is two and a half percent of that eighty-eight million. We factor in new growth, so any of the new development that the assessor is able to capture. We include the debt exclusion, the amended growth, subtract the excess levy capacity, and we're left with ninety-two million, seven hundred and eleven, and change, as the total fiscal twenty-four tax levy. So that's our starting point. So I want to then transition a little bit into what are the budget challenges we're seeing for fiscal twenty-five. We're seeing a huge labor, energy, and service contract that are increasing. This is due to inflation being at a generational high following a period of very low inflation. The board and the town has maintained a commitment to competitive pay for our labor force. We're seeing rapidly growing health insurance expenses for our employees and their dependents. We know that there might be new revenue opportunities on the horizon, but this could take some time due to development and what may happen in the market and the economy. Specifically, we're looking at the MBTA multifamily zoning, which will be on the town meeting warrant in March of twenty-twenty-three, and we're also looking to contract with an economic development consultant to help capture some new growth, and that is currently out for bid and due back the beginning of the year. As I noted in previous slide, the Proposition Two and a Half law really constrains what we can do and can't do related to that. For anyone who has not read the Budget Task Force, it's a light eighty-plus-page read, but we have a really high-level executive summary that, again, digs a little bit deeper into these budget challenges, so I really recommend that you just at least take out the executive summary and take a peek at that to understand these challenges further. This is a chart that highlights where we stand related to the fiscal twenty-four budget and those challenges that I just explained. So in the bottom left-hand corner is where we stand with our fiscal twenty-four budget, which was approved at town meeting, and then amended at October town meeting of a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars and change. We're then seeing contracted expenses rising in fiscal twenty-five and beyond, including solid waste, recycling, electricity, natural gas, and non-union salaries. We also are seeing town labor contracts exceeding, and then school labor contracts as well, going up even higher. Our health insurance expenses are increasing, our school bus contracts increasing even more, special education tuition, which is set by the state, it's not set by the town, so we do not have a choice related to that, and then other increases. So this constitutes as over a ten million dollar increase in fiscal twenty-four to fiscal twenty-five, that has no new personnel, no new services, and a careful pursuit of efficiencies that we've identified in the Budget Task Force work. This chart shows exactly the same thing, just in a chart format, so I won't go through it in great detail, but we wanted to make sure that we were showing it in both formats, because certain people view these items a little bit differently. We also want to highlight that the fiscal twenty-five budget... We also want to highlight that the fiscal twenty-five budget to fiscal twenty-six budget will actually be increasing even more. It's not that fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are going to be the same. We have a projected expense increase of ten point seven million dollars from fiscal twenty-five to twenty-six, or seven point seven percent, leaving an additional deficit of four point seven million in that sense. And then I'll go to the next slide that also constitutes what it looks like going between fiscal twenty-six and twenty-seven, as when we asked our departments to budget out, we always ask them to budget out two additional years. And many of these contracts are three-year contracts or longer. So we do have that data in place. So I want to make it really clear that we know that fiscal twenty-five is going to be a difficult year to budget for, and you'll see that again and again in this presentation. But we don't see that it's going to be getting any easier in fiscal twenty-six or twenty-seven unless inflation severely declines or we see some major new growth on the horizon. So again, in the opening, I alluded that the Select Board has given us direction to prepare two budgets, which are really two options for Westford. The first option is that non-override budget that includes the vast service reductions to fit within the Proposition Two and a Half limit. We are required to do that by state law. An option two is an override option that includes level services that would require that Proposition Two and a Half. I want to be clear that we're not asking for any extras on this Proposition Two and a Half presentation. You may be involved in other municipalities, if you've lived in other areas, and this is more for residents, that have done an operational override to increase services or increase opportunities. And that is not the case right now for Westford. Again, inflation is driving these costs, and we'll be phased in over the next three years. We want to talk about a multi-year view in the next two slides, and again, a reminder that this is a vote at town meeting and at the local election. So it is not just the Select Board making the decision, it is the voters and the taxpayers of Westford. Again, to just level set a little bit, there are changes to the budget that are included in both the non-override scenario and the override scenario. We very seriously are looking at integrating the efficiencies of the Budget Task Force work. And I'll go into those efficiencies in a few slides forward. We've looked at the Finance Committee Reserve Fund and are reducing that based upon historical averages. The assessors' has contracted services lineup was reduced as more personal property assessments would be conducted in-house. And we believe that this will be an efficiency also as there should be more value seen from that in-house employee. The council and aging's budget for building maintenance will go to public buildings, so that can be used across all public buildings as necessary. The Nishoba Tech budget is not final yet. We anticipate that will be final at the end of January, early February. But we only see that there might be a five percent increase as Westford's student enrollment is only expected increased by one percent. Solid waste and recycling are currently split budgets in the budget line item. We will be bringing on E.L. Harvey July first, 2024, and we will be combining that budget to make sure that we have efficiencies and we can move fluidly between solid waste and recycling, that budget line item. Continuing on, we do see a need to continue to have the public health nurse be budgeted at full-time, thirty-seven and a half hours. But because the majority of her seven point four, five hours would be immunizing our residents and clinic time, we say that that can come out of the revolving fund. It was funded through ARPA funds the past few years. We're also looking at a pilot program out of the conservation budget to provide staffing services to the Sony Brook Conservation Land on weekends for sixteen weeks, primarily in the summer and warmer months, as we're seeing complaints coming from residents related to conduct and other uses of the property. And we're looking at opportunities to help offset those costs as well. But this funding will be coming from the East Boston Camps Revolving Fund and not out of the general fund. We're seeing that the Water Enterprise is including eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of funding for PFOs treatment facilities, which we've been discussing over time, and more information to come on that. And then it's actually pleasing to present that the Recreation Enterprise budget, general fund subsidy, is decreasing, and you'll see those numbers there, about a hundred and seven, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar decrease. There's also been an efficiency in that department over the past year of a reduction of one administrative staff person and restructuring. I alluded to a few minutes ago about what the efficiencies of Budget Task Force report included, and some of the efficiencies that we're taking into account for fiscal twenty-five are as follows. We are developing cost models for these. I'm not comfortable with presenting actual costs today because they are not totally, fully baked out. But we would begin fleet fueling for all town vehicles with the exception of fire and some other specialized vehicles up at the highway garage. Currently, some of our fleet actually uses discounted cards at local area gas stations, which actually is not saving us money. It's quite a bit higher to purchase fuel at those gas stations rather than to bulk purchase and for everyone to get their fuel at the DPW garage. We're looking at centralizing our fleet maintenance up at the DPW garage. Right now, many of our departments actually send out their fleet for repairs to local dealerships, which is not as cost-effective. We're always comparing our fee structures to market related, specifically, the Health Department just adjusted their fees for the permits that they issue. The Ambulance Enterprise raised their rates back in October of 2023, and we're looking at other departments related to their fees and how they line up to comparable communities and the actual work that the departments are doing to cover their costs. At your last meeting, the board approved composting memorandum of understanding with Black, excuse me. I'm going to get the company incorrect, so I will not state it on live. But we hope that this will reduce the tonnage that people are putting into the trash and that they'll use this composting service, as well as we'll be bringing for the Recycling Commission in the next few meetings to talk about how to reduce tonnage related to recycling and other needs of disposing of waste. We're carefully and optimistically looking at the MBTA community's zoning and economic developments, but know that this will be a long haul and not an easy fix, that we likely would not see that new growth till fiscal twenty-three and beyond. And again, that's based upon the market conditions. We're looking at integrating what we do for technology between the town and school and how we can better use those services in between both of the sides of the house. We're looking at various shared service agreements, both internally to the town of Westford as well as externally. Those are more detailed in the Budget Task Force report. And we continue to monitor and examine where we are related to our health insurance and if there's anything we should be doing in the market in the future. So we'll get to the numbers now. The fiscal twenty-four versus fiscal twenty-five projected general revenue is as follows. So as alluded to in a previous slide, our tax revenue in fiscal twenty-four is slightly under ninety-three million dollars. With that Proposition Two and a Half increase and new growth, we see that the fiscal twenty-five tax revenue is ninety-five million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand and change, which is about three point one million dollars more. We are not anticipating a Proposition Two and a Half override in this scenario. We see local revenue increasing slightly by a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and state aid by two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So these things are not going to save us in the long run. So we see an increase year over year of three point five million dollars. This is just another chart that historically shows what we've seen in terms of revenue year over year. You'll see that our tax revenue continues to grow, but very slowly. That is because we are in the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half, and our new growth has not been substantial, which you'll see in a, in a future slide. Local revenue is quite small, and state aid also stays very consistent and small. We've used the following assumptions related to state aid. We will not know what the governor's budget looks like until late January. We're assuming that they will provide thirty dollars per student on Chapter Seventy funding, a one percent increase on unrestricted government aid, and a one percent increase on all other revenue. So clearly, this is not keeping pace with the inflation that we're seeing in our contracts and other services. The Nishoba Tech assessment will be adjusted after that governor's budget is released. And then there will be the ability to update these budgets in advance of the March twenty-third town meeting. This is the historic new growth that the town of Westford has seen for the past ten fiscal years. It was quite high in fiscal fourteen and fifteen, with cornerstone and some other residential developments. Then, again, was higher in fiscal twenty and twenty-one due to additional residential development and has really petered off. And we do not have a great forecast for fiscal twenty-five related to new growth. So I want to now step into the Option One budget, the fiscal year twenty-five budget without the Proposition Two and a Half override. And in this conversation, you will see the substantial cuts that we are looking at. We'll also ask the public to refer back to what the School Committee was presented by Dr. Chu last Monday, and they'll continue their discussions on the school budget on December eighteenth. So again, to level set, we have the new available dollars to use from Proposition Two and a Half increase, the new growth, excess capacity, debt exclusion, local revenue, and state aid. Again, three point five million dollars in new dollars. This digs a little bit deeper related to that allocation. We must fund our benefits and general insurance. We must fund our debt service, the Nishoba Tech assessments. We raise a certain amount related to that funding. We allow for abatements as they come in through the assessor's office. We have state assessments, and then the others are very limited. So we're at one point eight million. Of the new dollars, one point six eight we can allocate to town and school. And under the budget with no Proposition Two and a Half override, the allocation is about seventy-eight percent to the school budget and twenty-two percent to the town budget. Dollar amounts are on the right-hand column. So the highlights without a Proposition Two and a Half override are quite dire. With our allocation of town departments for three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars or a one point three percent increase. We have reduction in public safety, community wellness, sustainability coordinator, road repairs and maintenance, and snow and ice operations, library hours, administrative support, building permit and inspection review, and Healthy Lakes and Ponds Initiative. This lays out to the reduction of two police officers, two firefighters, one dispatcher, one community wellness coordinator, one sustainability coordinator, one heavy equipment operator, point nine FTEs, so full-time equivalent part-time library workers, point four FTE DPW business manager, and interns for the permitting and building department and building inspector coverage. The schools obviously are detailing their budget process, as I stated last Monday and this coming Monday. They are seeing a net reduction of seventy FTEs. This is in both scenarios, that they're seeing some reductions and then a larger reduction in the override. So I recommend that you really stay close to their presentations. We've taken this data directly from them. Their allocation is a two percent increase, while the town's allocation is a one point three percent increase. The next slides I'll go through just detail a little bit more about what was summarized in the previous slide and what that would mean related to a reduction. The reduction of two firefighters would result in sometimes temporarily closing the Rogers Fire Station. The reduction of two police officers would impact our community policing program. The reduction of one full-time dispatcher could cause additional order-ins and employee retention issues. The reduction of the community wellness program that provides mental health services and programming to staff in the community was primarily first funded by ARPA for the Community Wellness Coordinator, but also has stems in the Board of Health Office and Senior Center, but there would be a reduction in that area. There would be a reduction of the Sustainability Coordinator, which could lead to less grants and funding related to sustainability and not be able to reach our 2050 roadmap goals. The reduction of one heavy equipment operator could cause potential delays in roadway maintenance and plowing. We'd be looking at reducing the library hours from fifty-five to fifty hours per week and decreasing that part-time staffing. We do want to note that this still meets our state aid requirements with mass library, and we wanted to make sure that we were making sure we had all of that revenue in place and looking to decrease the business manager budget to twenty-two hours per week that could place more work on the DPW director. Continuing on, the reduction in the building department would be potential delays in inspections and potential delays in new growth. Reduction of seasonal staff in highway cemetery parks and grounds could delay how our properties are maintained. We would reduce our community outreach due to the elimination of the strategic planning retreats. We decrease across all departments. Continuing education would be a detriment upon the public, excuse me, the employees' educational growth. We'd be eliminating planning studies from the land use department. We'd be deferring maintenance to town buildings and just doing what is absolutely mandatory to get by. We'd reduce fire alarm boxes, expenses in the fire department, eliminate the dental service program in the Board of Health, and reduce the veteran services funding to meet current claims, which is low, and we may need to supplement that into the future. Additional reductions would be reducing parks and grounds maintenance, so fields will be treated and maintained less frequently. We discontinue the Healthy Lakes and Ponds Initiative to treat our water bodies, and local associations may choose to treat those ponds through donations of their associations or their neighborhoods. We'd be delaying projects recommended for bonding and have to borrow in a different function. We'd be reducing our appropriation to the Health Insurance Trust, and that would be because of decrease in personnel. But we might still need to appropriate additional funding if claims remain high. We've shown an increase in unemployment insurance related to potential layoffs in this scenario. And we've also reduced the enterprise funding for recreation for a part-time staff person. So this chart lays out what that potential projected expenditures without a Proposition Two and a Half override would be. The town departments, total forty million dollars, six hundred and thirty-three. Schools, eighty-three million, six twenty-one. Other, that covers health insurance, OPEB and others, thirteen million, one hundred and sixty, for a total budget of a hundred and thirty-seven million, four fifteen, four forty-nine. I'll then transition to what a fiscal twenty-five budget with a Proposition Two and a Half override could be. And I want to just note that, again, these are still ongoing conversations. We've used a specific number for the creation of this budget, but that budget number could change over time. So this is a similar chart to what you saw before in the non-override budget. We still have the same Proposition Two and a Half increase. We still have the new growth. We've plugged in a Proposition Two and a Half override amount of eight million dollars, and then all of the other dollar amounts remain the same. So the fiscal twenty-five new revenue could be eleven point five million dollars. Again, this is a very similar chart to what you saw before, except that it plugs in the eight million dollars for the override, which would allow for additional revenue to come in for the school budget. Seventy-seven percent at four point six million and twenty-three percent from the town side for one point three million dollars. So this highlight, again, with a contemplated eight million dollar Proposition Two and a Half override would allow the town departments one point three eight million dollars of an increase. Again, want to reiterate, this is no new services, no new staff cuts, includes a fiscal twenty-five contract renewals that are listed in the budget challenges and the integrated efficiencies in the Budget Task Force work. We're allocating to the schools a seven percent increase over fiscal twenty-four, four point six percent, excuse me, four point six million. We want to give the board and members of the public a few graphics of what this could mean and why we have this contemplation. We are seeing, again, that expenses are climbing rapidly through fiscal twenty-five to twenty-seven, driving those service cuts each year. service cuts each year. To support that baseline budget, we see a required override of $8 million would still leave a budget cliff in fiscal 27 of 3.2 million dollars. If we were to move to an override type of scenario, we would move to an override stabilization fund to bank some of the funds that would not be used in fiscal 25 for future fiscal years. And just want to note that this is a model used successfully in a number of Massachusetts communities and that generates sufficient revenue for a specific agreed-upon period of time that we discuss between the select board and the school committee of how that is split up. So this scenario contemplates that the additional fiscal 25 general revenue would be 3.5 million. We'd have a budget request to maintain services of 8.8 million and the gap of 5.2 million. So we'd appropriate into the override stabilization fund 2.7 million for a total override amount of $8 million. We also wanted to give the board and the public a three-year scenario. So we feel that the $8 million could get us through two years based upon the projections that we have. We feel that a $9 million override could get us through three fiscal years, but could however leave a cliff in fiscal 28. But this could be mitigated with new growth, additional efficiencies in revenue, and/or an additional operational override. And similar math to what you saw in the last slide, I won't read out all of these revenues and expenses, but you can see from the chart that we would be continuing to put money into the override stabilization fund and then extracting that for the fiscal 26 budget and the fiscal 27 budget. Many of you watching or viewing may say, I don't even know what an $8 million override would look like. How does that impact me? Obviously, most people are looking at their bank accounts and how that would impact their family and their household. So in general, an $8 million override right now would be $1.19 of a tax rate increase. In general terms, each $1 million override would cost the median single-family home, which is currently assessed at $756,000, $112. So if we're looking at an $8 million override on that median single-family home, which would be showing on this chart, so you can just look at your assessor's card, how your home is valued and where you might fall on this chart. But again, $112 per million override. So this chart again is just a reiteration of what was shown before, but with an override of the proposition two and a half expenditures. The schools and, excuse me, the town would have a total of $42 million or 28.9% of the budget. The schools would have 87 million point five, excuse me, 87 million point five or 60% of the budget. And then the other would be joint with health insurance, general insurance and others, 13 million for a total fiscal 25 budget of 145 million, 415,000. We want to make sure that the board and the public understand what we have in reserves. So the top line lays out what we have as our free cash balance for fiscal 25, excuse me, fiscal 23 and 24. We are showing a slight decrease in that free cash balance due to expenditures that we've had to put in, mostly related to health insurance. We also wanted to put in the March annual town meeting appropriations of capital, budget supplementals, snow and ice deficit, perchlorate, OPEB and opioid, remaining available reserves, and then the total reserves of the 5% minimum balance. Very quickly, I will go through our fiscal 25 capital investment. This remains unchanged related to the override versus non-override budget. Capital is budgeted separately and is not included in that projection. So we're planning to use 2.15 million dollars of free cash, general fund bonds of 1.8 million, enterprise bonds of 25 million. That is primarily the PFOS treatment plant for the water, treatment plants for the water department, enterprise revenue retained earnings and other available funds. The blue preliminary capital planning committee recommendations is a link that will bring you to the projects that we have programmed in and I would just like to thank the capital planning committee for their guidance and recommendation related to that. We'll then go into discussing the non-excluded debt service. So this is not required to go before a ballot vote. We have this debt service within the levy limit. We have fiscal 25 non-excluded debt of 2.2 million dollars with 1.19 permanently bonded and 943,000 in estimated debt bond payments for the projects that are listed below. We also are looking to see what the Ameresco projects come in for investment-grade audits and we'll be looking to build that into the town meeting warrant. And then in terms of capital, we're looking to bond two six-wheel dump trucks and two six-wheel swap loaders for the DPW as well as the plain road sidewalk phase two construction. I'm rounding it out. I have two, three more slides, so thank you for your patience. I know this is a long presentation. We want to make sure that the board and the public are still aware that we do have many budget variables and that this is going to be an evolving process over the next few months. We have state and federal aids still that needs to come in. We're still evaluating new growth. That's always ever-changing. We're monitoring our solid waste of recycling and how much solid waste we have to tip at the Covanta site, what our infrastructure and facilities look like and planning for that over time, what our public safety needs are, what our energy costs are and what the impact will be from that if we move forward with the Ameresco energy contracts, what the clean energy and sustainability recommendations will be, how we move forward with the cleanup and disposition of 12 North Main Street, where the trends are related to hotel and meals excise tax, what winter we have this year related to snow and ice, and then obviously the override versus non-override budget that we discussed this evening. So I want to be really clear with the board and the public about the next steps and how people can stay involved in the process and informed. So obviously tonight, we're giving the town manager budget presentation. On January 9th, the select board, school committee and finance committee plan to meet and discuss the budget and discuss the override and non-override scenarios and what they'd like to do moving forward. The finance committee will be holding public hearings on all budget matters on the town side, January 11th through February 1st on Thursday evenings via Zoom. On January 23rd, the select board will vote to close the town meeting warrant. On February 13th, the select board will set that warrant article order. March 23rd at 9:00 AM, which is Saturday, at Westford Academy will be the annual town meeting and then the annual town election will be on May 7th. We want to make sure that we're taking into consideration the following, the impact on our taxpayers. We want to make sure we continue to educate the public of the impact of the override versus the non-override budget. We're continuing to examine our baseline budget to determine the best service levels and the override mix for the town of Westford. We want to continue to review and consider implementing the efficiencies and the new revenue sources that were identified by the budget task force. How the public can stay involved. So again, many ways, attending the select board, school committee, finance committee joint meeting on January 9th, attending all of those finance committee public hearings on Thursday evenings. We've provided a link for you to sign up for agendas through our agenda center, so we really encourage you to do that as members of the public. We'll be continuing to update our town meeting page through westfordna.gov. You may certainly email me and the select board with questions or concerns. I've actually received a few and they've been quite helpful for me to understand what the public is hearing and thinking and seeing. And we're developing frequently asked questions based upon what we're getting in for feedback. We anticipate to issue a variety of educational videos, as I stated at the beginning, that were created by the budget task force members and key leadership of the town, and I'll be posting those later this week. And most importantly, attending town meeting on March 23rd. That's where your voices will be heard related to the town budget. So just in closing, I really want to thank the budget task force for the tireless efforts, really digging in deep of where the town and school budgets are and how we can be more efficient and how we line up with our comparable communities. Certainly really want to thank the department heads and the staff. They have overturned all of the rocks that they can possibly overturn related to budget challenges and certainly in my first year as town manager have educated me on the ins and outs of how their budgets work in specific departments. Again, we welcome the public input and suggestions and we're committed to examine all these opportunities and strive to continue to provide the high quality of services that Westford residents are known for. So with that, thank you for bearing with me on this lengthy presentation. We'll turn it back over to the chairperson.
Thanks, Kristin. A lot of work, a lot of numbers in there. And you know, a calendar of where we're going to be going, going forward. I guess, knowing that we have got a lot of other meetings coming up, I still want to up it up to the floor tonight. Is there any questions for Kristin on this presentation, first from the board and then from the audience?
Lots to digest.
You see what happens when you have a long-term plan of 2.5% and inflation runs at about 2%. The math works. When inflation is running at 5 or 6%, in fact, even today, the newest number is a 3.1% annually. So 2.5 doesn't work anymore. So that's, this problem is partly some bad luck with things like health insurance and partly just simple math in terms of inflation on the economy. And we're all seeing it in our household bills, but town, the town has had three-year contracts, so it comes due all at once. We don't see it gradually as, as most of us do month to month in our, in our home budgets. So with that, Tom, you've got a comment?
Yeah, just, thanks, Scott. I just wanted to thank Kristin and Dan for all the work putting together not one but two budgets and all the people in town staff and school staff. It's, it's difficult to face this kind of reality that we're in, so just a lot of gratitude for their hard work, doing twice as much work as normal and facing some really hard choices. And also just echoing something Kristin said at the beginning, everything outlined in this budget is really a starting point and everything that Chris Chu laid out in the schools budget is a starting point. And there'll be lots of chances to scrutinize each individual piece of it as we walk through our discussions on the 9th and then the detailed discussions in the budget hearing. I would anticipate that the budget we end with will have some improvements and some changes and some, some careful thoughts about priorities. So if you've got a feeling about what you're seeing so far, please share them, please engage with us in all the different ways that Kristin mentioned. Email us if you've got the questions. Because want to make sure that by the time we are sort of doing the final approach to town meeting, we've got all the best input and feel like we've really hit the best balance point for, for our community. So lots of opportunity to, to continue to dig in on this and just continue gratitude from town staff and school staff for all their hard work.
Any comments from the audience tonight? Okay. With that, okay.
I just have a quick question. Heather Fitzpatrick. A lot of the reasons that you stated for increasing the budget are statewide, if not national. So is this happening in every town? Is every town having this huge discrepancy in needing to go for overrides?
I can answer that. I'm talking to a number of municipal managers and finance directors and Westford certainly is not alone. I'm seeing that a lot of other towns are having contracts due and labor costs that are increasing. I think we're ahead of most because our budget is due so soon. The majority of the other municipalities that have a town meeting form of government are looking at a May town meeting and a May budget, so we're a little bit ahead, but I can't say for a fact how many municipalities might be going for an override or also experiencing other budget challenges, but there's quite a bit. I know in the Lowell Sun this week and last week, the town of Drake it noted that at their select board meeting. So we are not alone in this.
Paul Fosbender, 14 Texas Road. It's just mind-boggling every year when we looked at all of the details that are involved in this budget and so forth. I really appreciate this process. It gives two different scenarios that we can evaluate over the next few months and so forth. One thing that struck me was in Kristin's presentation when she mentioned Prop 2.5 started in 1980. Well, it's about the time I moved to Westford and at that time, I had to search all over the place to find a 30-year mortgage rate of 11.5%. So high inflation is something that many of us remember from the, the bad old days. And I went back and looked at inflation rates through the 70s and 80s and there were national inflation rates like 13.3%, 12.5%, stuff like that. Through the 80s, it was mainly close to 4% for most of the time. So it was a tough time for budgeting and so forth. We've been really fortunate over the last 20 years. In many cases, we had inflation rates running at under 1%. And at the time, there was a little bit of discussion every now and then saying, gee, with Prop 2.5, should we be raising the, the property tax less than 2.5, you know, the levy less than 2.5%? Or should we be collecting it and maybe put aside some of the difference for rainy day fund because we know inflation rates will eventually go higher and so forth? Well, of course, the temptation over the years was always to spend as much as we could get and more, so we never did put aside a little savings program for the future. And as you've mentioned, we've had two years of like 7 and 6.5% inflation. Hopefully, the next two years won't be as high, but I think the fact remains, when we have high inflation, it really is important to make some tough decisions and really be tough on the prioritization and so forth and look at making some cuts and living within our budget. I'll also point out, as you mentioned, the people at home have the same problem. I got my social security COLA notice for this coming year, 3.2%. You know, thanks a lot, government. Then further down in the note, by the way, your healthcare insurance is going up 10.6%. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of that going on in, in costs of what we're spending for our goods and services. I'm sure you see that in your household budgets and so forth. And I know Dan and I had some experience with a slider committee a few years ago. We looked at a number of the people in Westford who are on social security alone, who don't have the luxury of, you know, big pension plans and things like that in addition. A couple of years of, of, you know, property taxes going up a lot higher than their meager COLA increases and so forth is going to put even more pressure on some of the people that we already saw were having problems, you know, with their day-to-day spending and so forth. So I hope as we go forward in this process, that we'll spend a little bit more time looking at the total impact on the residents. You know, it wasn't clear to me whether this presentation was showing just the impact on the residents from the budget discussion or whether that also includes excluded debt, stormwater fees and some of the other things residents pay money to the town for. And to really get residents on our side or your side for passing the budget at town meeting, I think it would be worth spending a little more time developing that part of the argument and showing people, you know, the, the total picture of what's happening with the town expenses. And along that line, when you show the dire consequences of the no override budget, I think it's important to also show the things that the school committee and the town have protected in that budget. Hopefully, some of the things that are covered that have been hot topics in the past, our competitive teacher salaries and a bunch of other things, showing that those are covered in the baseline, baseline plan, I think would really go a long way to, to selling the whole process. So I thank you all and I'm looking forward to the next month or two. It's going to be fun.
I try to pick fun as the correct attitude, but that's okay. Anything else? Okay, so thank you very much, Kristin, everybody. I would then move on to our, our next item, which is all the business. And first of all, do we want to meet again as a select board in December? Or do we need to, I guess is the question, as opposed to want to?
Before, before you enter into a conversation with the board members, I just request, I did get a request from Jeff Morissette to give the board an update on MBTA communities, hopefully within the month of December. John, I'm sure you can fill the board in a little bit more, but we wanted to be submitting our plan to our plan to DHCD, uh, ELOHC, excuse me, for the alphabet soup because they keep changing their acronym, acronyms. So if we could do some sort of a December meeting for that to happen, it could be remote, it could be in person, but just want to take that under consideration for your thoughts, and we might have some purchase orders and, and some very low light business to take care of before the end of the month.
So, well, Tom, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Maybe you can get a sense from the other board members. I think the options are for us to meet, uh, next week or meet on the twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth, many of us would be remote. It'd be a largely remote meeting, and we would largely deal with sort of procedural and urgent issues. I think we could address Jeff's issue at that time. So I don't know how the board, the board feels. Uh, I think we do need to have a meeting because there's enough stacking up that we'll have to get together. So either next week or the twenty-sixth, I think are options. Twenty-sixth, we would go in knowing it would be a shorter agenda.
Okay, Andrea?
So, sort of, Tom, kind of following up on what you were saying, um, maybe, you know, either, you know, next week or actually sometime between now and the twenty-sixth, we schedule a meeting to, uh, address, you know, Jeff Morissette's MBTA and anything, you know, purchase orders or anything else. I think, you know, let's, let's do it hybrid so that we don't all have to say, oh, I'm not available this night, I'm not available that night, and see if we can just come up with, even if it's during the day, you know, a time when all of us, I mean, an hour, an hour and a half, you know, an hour basically, you know, to do, take care of any immediate business. So, um, that, that would be my suggestion. Um, and that, you know, we, um, and frankly, you know, if we can, we do it hybrid so that, you know, if it turns out that it's a day where, you know, some of us are on, you know, away, you can just, um, you know, you, you can sign in and just zoom into the meeting, you know? If, if some of the staff are, are away on vacation or something, they can zoom in. So that, that would be my suggestion.
Scott, if it's okay. So just, I want to make sure I understand. So I like your suggestion, Andrea. It sounds like Kristin and I would get together, put together an agenda so we knew how much time it would be, and then put out a survey, uh, giving people a range of times to choose from, and we, we picked the one that worked best for everybody and, and have it be really a hybrid meeting.
I think that makes sense, Tom.
Well done, you guys, Tom, so make it so.
Okay, all right, let's, let's, let's make that the plan. Uh, I'll be back in the U.S., uh, by the end of the week, so I'll talk with Kristin on Friday, and we'll set up a time and sound out a survey.
And it's highly unlikely that the meeting will be on the nineteenth. Um, the finance committee is meeting that night, as well as I do not believe that Jeff will be ready. Um, the planning board meets on the eighteenth, and he needs, um, a few days to get the materials ready for you. So, um, we'll work later this week on all of that logistics and get back to the board.
Moving on to, um, next year, do we all take a look at our calendars and see if we've inadvertently scheduled something on a, on a holiday that we wish we hadn't done? So is there a motion to approve the calendar for twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Uh, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Is, we request open the annual town meeting warrant for Saturday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Board reports updates, anything beyond the, uh, MBTA communities that Kristin just kind of gave us? Okay, um, town manager's report, back to you, Kristin.
Sure, so it's pretty light, um, this evening. Um, the first is a grant, um, that the health department is asking for authorization. Just want to be clear that the board had already authorized the first half of this grant funding, the Northwest Coalition for Public Health Excellence Grant. Um, this is just the second installment of that for you to accept those funds, um, and Ray Dick is on the line if you have any questions related to that. Uh, then we have two contracts. We have cornerstone construction for the Roanoke Bush Community Center Water Mitigation and Restoration Project in the amount of ninety-three thousand, four seventy-seven, as requested by the Facilities Department. Uh, we've had some water issues and water damage that we're going to be getting fixed, and that is the, the little bid that came in to do that. And then we have the natural systems utilities for professional wastewater operations services for one year, uh, in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and three dollars, as requested by the Water Department. And I see that Mark Warren is on the line as well, if you have any questions related to that. And Jeff Goodwin is on the line if you have any questions related to Roanoke Bush.
I just wanted to say thanks to Jeff because he had a presentation last Monday for town building, uh, pro town building committee on, on that work, and very, very good detective work to find problems that probably been there for quite some time, and, um, this was like a really good solution that we probably, which we, which we'd done about probably twenty years ago, but that was, uh, the, of the, of old buildings that, uh, as built aren't there from, what, eighteen forty something? So, um, is there a motion to approve, or accept the grants, approve the contracts?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Move to way reading of correspondence.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea? Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm an aye. So before we adjourn, um, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, um, whatever holiday you celebrate, hope you have time with family, with friends, um, be kind to each other, um, celebrate the light of the season, whatever that religion might be. It's all, it's all, uh, around light and darkness, so, uh, wish you all the best. And with that, you're supposed to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Good night, Westford.
Good night.